The RTA's YouTube page when it's concluded. I'd ask everybody to please mute themselves and stay on mute until you are invited to speak. Rest assured that if you have questions or comments you'd like to share, you're going to be able to do so. Please note that closed captioning is available for all attendees. Zoom users can access the closed captioning by clicking on closed captioning. Or if you don't see the closed captioning, the more menu at the bottom of your screen should take care of that problem. Both are going to lead you to a menu from which you can choose to show subtitles. Those watching the recording of this meeting on YouTube can just click the CC button on the bottom right. The governor's emergency declaration remains in force during the COVID-19 pandemic. And pursuant to his executive orders declaring the public health emergency and recent amendments to the Open Meetings Act. We continue to operate under the permission to conduct this meeting without physical attendance requirements. As the head of a public body, I find that it's not prudent or practical to hold an in-person meeting or to have staff or any other member of the board or public at our headquarters during this meeting. So today's meeting, let's put up that slide. There you go. Some guidelines for this hearing. Keep your audio on mute as much as possible to minimize background noise. This hearing will begin with a presentation by RTA Executive Director Leanne Redden. At the conclusion of her presentation, those who have notified the RTA that they would like to speak will be called upon in the order their notifications were received by us. After those public comments are shared, if anyone else in the audience has questions or comments, please indicate that you would like to speak using the chat box and a staff member will call on you. After which you can unmute yourself and enable your camera if you wish. Camera use is encouraged, but it's not required. Once all attendees who wish to speak have a turn, we'll check the comments via our call-in line. This meeting will remain live and participants will be invited to speak as they join up until 7:00 PM. For if any reason you experience difficulties and can't speak or for any reason leave the meeting and can't re-enter, please email communications@rtachicago.org. It's a .org. For all questions and comments, technical or otherwise, please use the chat box and the RTA staff will respond as quickly as possible. Before the presentations begin, I want to thank and acknowledge the other RTA board members who are with us this evening and ask them to unmute and introduce themselves as I call on them. Stay and they can share their name with you, but most importantly, they can talk about or introduce the region in which they represent. Let's start with Director Bill Coulson. Director Coulson, good evening.
Oh, good evening. Good evening to you all. I'm Bill Coulson. I represent the northern Cook County suburbs, but I really like to think that I represent the region.
Great. Thank you, Director Coulson. You represent your region very, very well. I don't know if we've been joined yet by Director Gaving or Gavin. Director Gaving, are you with us yet? She may pop in and out during the evening. Director Elizabeth Gorman, are you with us yet?
He's just joining right now, Chairman Dillard.
Super.
So she might not have heard that even.
All right, I can come back to her. Director Gorman represents the south suburban area of Cook County and she does it very well. And she's a former member of the actual county board of Cook County. Director JD Ross from out in the Joliet area. Director Ross, I know you're on.
Yes, JD Ross, I represent Will County.
Thank you very much, JD. And Director Dr. Brian Sager, Director from out in McHenry.
Yes, Chairman Brian Sager, Director from McHenry County and very happy to join the meeting this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And Director Sager also has mayoral experience, which makes him incredibly valuable to the RTA and its riders. Did I miss any directors? If I did, chime in at any time or just let through the chat box, let the staff know that you want to introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, Chairman Dillard, Director Groban is here as well.
Great, Director Groban. Thank you, from out in Kane County.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, pleasure to be here tonight. Chris Groban, representing Kane County.
Thank you very much, Director Groban. All right. Anyway, thank you to all the directors for being here tonight. And most importantly, thank all of you who are taking time out from your busy schedules and lives at this time of year to give us your valuable insight. I will now call this hearing to order and invite the RTA Executive Director Leanne Redden to provide a presentation on this year's proposed regional operating budget and capital plan. Leanne, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that. Welcome to everyone who has joined us this evening. As Chairman Dillard said, my name's Leanne Redden. I'm the Executive Director of the RTA. Tonight, I am going to begin with the role and the purpose of the RTA, how the budget and how the budget was developed. Then I'm going to provide you a broad overview of the budget. And finally, explain the process that we will follow after this meeting concludes to adopt and execute the budget and our current work on developing an updated new regional transit strategic plan. The RTA or the Regional Transportation Authority is a unit of local government charged with regional financial oversight, funding, transit planning for the service boards. And the three service boards are the Chicago Transit Authority, LCTA, Metra, PACE Bus and PACE ADA Paratransit. The RTA reviews, adopts and monitors the three service boards, annual operating budgets and five-year capital programs. So next slide, please. The RTA serves six counties and is overseen by a 16-member Board of Directors. And to assure regional representation, 15 directors are appointed from within the six-county region. Chairman, the chairman of the board is then elected by the board members. By law, the RTA is tasked with providing financial oversight to CTA, Metra and PACE. The agency allocates operating and capital funds made available to support public transit in the region. And of course, the RTA has its own budget as well. The RTA is responsible for approving and monitoring the five-year capital program. The capital funding plan supports expenditures to maintain and improve the region's extensive transit infrastructure and vehicle fleets. About a third of the region's transit assets are beyond their basic useful life. They are safe to ride, but as a result, more expensive to maintain. So next slide. This year has seen a continuation of really the greatest disruption in history of our public transit system. As with every other transit agency in the US, our system has seen only partial recovery from the dramatic decreases in ridership and fare revenue due to COVID-19. And since the pandemic began, CTA, Metra and PACE have continued providing safe, reliable trips to meet dramatically shifting customer needs. Their employees have performed heroically in particular by transporting essential workers safely from the first days of the crisis. Together, the agencies have created a culture of COVID prevention and our region's trains and buses have never been cleaner. Next slide. So despite significant upticks in ridership since the onset of the COVID pandemic, as of mid-October, ridership is down 52% system-wide compared to before the pandemic. That said, approximately 874,000 daily trips are still currently being taken across our transit system. But due to the decreased ridership, Fairbox revenues for all three service boards have suffered in tandem. So next slide. Over the past two years, the RTA has worked diligently to distribute approximately 3.4 billion in federal relief funds to the service boards to make up for the lost public funding and operating revenues resulting from the pandemic. More than 2 billion is going to the CTA. More than a billion is going to Metra. And just shy of a quarter of a billion or just a bit over 200 million is going to PACE. This funding sustains operations for all three of them through most of 2025. Over the next few slides, I'm going to provide you an overview of the regional budget. The RTA's continued work to support recovery through the most efficient use of available dollars will mean that this proposed budget will likely require almost immediate amendment in the first quarter of '22 to fully reflect the allocation of the most recent round of federal relief dollars. Further, the RTA's role as stewards of this funding demands that we continue to carefully monitor the drawdown and use of those dollars and that our Board of Directors continue to take action as needed to ensure that we can sustain critical transit operations across the region. Together, our task is to ensure that our transit system continues to serve its riders. And we must also plan strategically to strengthen our transit system to ensure that it can adapt for the region's long-term future. I'll discuss a little bit more of that in a moment. Now I'm going to provide you a breakdown of the operating budgets or the money needed over the next year to keep the trains and buses moving and the capital program for each service board, which is the money needed over the next five years to replace and improve old trains, buses, stations, make modest expansions and continue to innovate and adapt the system to better serve the region. So next slide. The CTA expense budget of 1.7 billion is 51.3% of the total regional budget and incorporates full service levels. Metra's proposed budget of 900 million represents 26.4% of the region's expenses and includes almost fully restored service levels. Next slide. The PACE Suburban Bus Budget of 273 million represents 8% of regional expenses and assumes a continued restoration of suspended routes as well as some new service offerings. PACE ADA Paratransit has a budget of 226 million or 6.6% of the regional expenses and is used to meet the ridership levels which are expected to be at about 75% of normal or pre-pandemic. 203 million, about 6% of the regional budget, will be used to pay principal and interest on existing RTA bonds that fund capital projects for the service boards and on the short-term borrowing that the RTA uses to keep operating funding flowing to the service boards as a buffer against delays in state payments to the RTA. So next slide. 47 million is budgeted for the RTA agency expenses, including regional programs and services and represents about 1.4% of the total regional expenses. The remaining less than 1% is for the joint self-insurance fund premiums that we cover. Next slide. Overall, the proposed 22 regional operating budget totals 3.4 billion, a 4.6% increase from the pre-COVID 2022 plan. So next slide. Now I'll move on and discuss the five-year capital program. For the last several years, based on the vision and goals of our strategic plan, Invest in Transit, the RTA and service boards have been working together to articulate and advance a regional transit capital strategy. The enactment of the June 2019 Rebuild Illinois, the state's first large-scale transportation bill in more than 10 years, provided the RTA system with 2.6 billion over five years in state bond funding and established approximately 227 million annually in gas tax revenue, referred to as Pago dollars for our transit system also. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic, the RTA and service boards continued to execute the capital program, including granting funds and constructing projects. Throughout 2021, the agencies worked together with the Illinois Department of Transportation to implement the Rebuild Illinois program. In '21, the RTA and service boards also drafted a new method for allocating federal formula and state Pago dollars. This performance-based capital allocation process distributes funds based on need, project delivery timing and the regional priorities. The new approach better matches service board needs, puts a focus on equity and accessibility projects and incentivizes the service boards to deliver projects to the region in a timely fashion. This year, the state of Illinois also enacted legislation requiring a transparent prioritization process for northeastern Illinois transit projects receiving state capital funds. Several regional plans and processes are already in place to guide the transit capital programming process. So RTA is currently reviewing the criteria outlined in this new state legislation alongside current processes and criteria to determine where alignment is already occurring and where there are opportunities to better match with the new state legislation in future programming and reporting efforts. In the next few slides, I'm going to provide an overview of the five-year capital program presented in three ways. By the core requirements of the transit agencies that they must fulfill by the Invest in Transit three strategic goals for the five-year timeframe. And then finally, by a set of specific priority projects identified in Invest in Transit that will be advanced with additional funding. So next slide. In total, the proposed regional five-year capital program is 5.3 billion, which is 17% less than the '21 through '25 program because the last of the Rebuild Illinois bond funds were programmed in '20, '21. After accounting for CTA debt service payments, the region has approximately 4.2 billion to program and the use of capital fund for the capital projects, I should say, between '22 and '26. This budget does not, and that's this important point, does not include any of the dollars from the newly passed federal infrastructure, federal infrastructure bill. So next slide. Yes, correct. So looking at the program through the lens of the core requirements, 3 billion in funds are used on projects with the requirement of maintaining and improving safety and reliability. While projects to improve equity and achieve full accessibility will receive approximately 2.2 billion and 1.6 billion respectively. Note that the service boards may select up to two core requirements per project. For 2025 and beyond, the service boards will need to ensure that at least 20% of their program fulfills the core requirements for improving equity or achieving full accessibility. And region-wide, 44% of funding or 395.5 million is programmed to projects that improve equity and accessibility in 2025. And 51% of funding or 446.6 million is allocated in 2026. So next slide, please. Viewing funding by the strategic goals reveals even starker differences across the three goals of the Invest in Transit Plan. 58% of funding or 3 billion has been assigned to deliver value on investments. While 38% of funding or 2 billion goes to building on the strengths of the existing network. And 4% or just over 200 million goes to the focus of staying competitive. Service boards primarily choose projects that help maintain the current system, which are most often categorized by delivering value on our investments rather than advance expansions and enhancements due to really the historic lack of capital funding that we have had. So next slide, please. The service boards have identified 75 priority projects that they would advance with additional funding through Invest in Transit and subsequent annual updates. Four have been fully funded. The current 22 through 26 capital program funds a portion of the priority projects at about 14.5% of the total 10-year need. 25 do not receive any funding, so additional funding is needed to advance them all. Shown here are the top three funded priority projects for each of the three service boards as well as the total need over 10 years, just to provide some overarching context. So next slide, please. In 2020, the RTA developed a three-step COVID recovery strategy for the first two steps, which were to budget realistically in a time of crisis and to sustain regional public transit through a time of great certainty. And we accomplished those first two steps transparently and collaboratively. The RTA, Metra, CTA and PACE, all working in common purpose with a series of public board meetings and other public discussions. Now we embark on step three, crafting a new regional strategic plan and integrating the vision for the future of public transit with a new 10-year financial plan, both required by law as well as stewardship. The timing could not be, you know, could not be better really given the recent passage of the historic federal infrastructure bill that gives us more ability to take on big challenges before us. And for our region, it's going to mean more than a billion dollars over the next five years in new money. So next slide, please. This chart shows the process by which the strategic plan is being developed across three concurrent tracks. The first track is financial planning. This track includes the development of the '22 and '23 regional operating and capital budgets and the allocation of the remaining federal relief monies. A separate project within this track will analyze the potential funding scenarios over a longer timeframe of 10 years to really help prepare the region and the decision-makers for the needed future actions to ensure financial sustainability across our federal, as across as our federal relief dollars are expended. And this track will culminate in what we're referring to as our 10-year financial plan. Simultaneously, the strategic planning track will provide a forum and a vehicle for developing a new vision for our regional transit system. And activities will include identifying capital projects and other supporting elements needed to achieve that vision and a forum for those conversations about the trade-offs between visionary ideals and the funding realities we face. Deliverables from these two tracks will be combined to create the regional strategic vision and 10-year financial plan to guide all four agencies and decision-makers in future actions that will be needed really to implement all the projects, the ideas, as well as execute on the funding. Underlying these activities and continuing through implementation will be a communications track. This track will provide multiple opportunities for interested parties and partners to engage, provide input and understand the outcomes. We are currently identifying what priorities must be considered in making strategic operational and the capital plan to adequately serve our region and its people. These priorities will guide the plan development in 2022. This engagement process is in full swing and I encourage everyone here and anyone who's watching this to sign up for the regional transit update newsletter via the RTA homepage, where you can also find a quick survey that you can take and let us know your thoughts about where we should focus our efforts as we develop this next strategic plan. It'll also help you stay up to date on other engagement opportunities. In early 2023, the Integrated Strategic and Financial Regional Transit Plan, after full public engagement, will be put before the RTA Board for consideration. So next slide, please. More detailed information about the links to the service board's budgets and information about each agency's public hearing can be found on our website at rtachicago.org. We encourage you to review those and provide comments. The comment period for this proposed regional operating budget and capital program is open through December 15, the day before our RTA Board meets next, when the budget will be voted on. Any public comments received before noon, December 15, will be posted to the RTA website and included in the agenda for the next board meeting. Those wishing to attend the board meeting will find a link to register and join on our website and can join on our website about a week before that meeting is expected to, planned to occur. So now I'm going to turn it back to RTA's Director of Communications, Tina Facet Smith, who will invite those of you who want to make comments to speak. So Tina, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Leanne. As Leanne mentioned, my name is Tina Smith. I am the RTA's Director of Communications. So to provide verbal comments, attendees wishing to place their name in the chat. I see that many of you have already done that. Thank you so much. I have the, between those who were sent to me before the meeting and those in the chat, I have 11 names. I'll call on people in order and you can unmute yourself and speak. But even if you didn't put your name in there and you didn't send your name, if you'd like to speak, say you're on the phone, we will check many times to make sure that everyone has gotten their turn. So I appreciate your patience. Just a reminder that once you unmute and enable your camera, if you wish, we would appreciate it if you kept your comments to 10 minutes or less. So first we'll hear from those who I was notified in advance would like to speak. And the first name I have is Kristen Youngman. So I believe you're present, so if you could unmute and if you wish, turn your camera on and provide your comments.
Hi. Yes, actually, I'd like my friend Marina Scorchati to speak first because she has a very small time amount to speak. And then I will.
Go ahead. Absolutely.
Am I on?
You are. We can hear you. If you just start with your name and proceed with your comments.
Hey, thanks, Kristen. I have to go film in a minute, which is why she let me on. So my name is Marina Scorchati. I'm a resident of Chicago. I'm a taxpayer. I'm also a mom to a small child. I'm an actress on Chicago PD. I'm really here to voice my concern that we as a city are not putting our dollars where our promises for a cleaner future are. I really, really care about Chicago and I care about the earth. And I ask that you no longer put your tax, our taxpayer funds towards purchasing fossil fuel buses that hurt our kids and our health. I'm here to encourage you to be a real hero and protect our streets, just like I do for pretend on TV. I can't believe how nervous I am. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Kristen Young, would you like to go next?
Yes, I would like to go next. Thank you so much. Okay, so I'm Kristen Youngman. I am a resident of Womet. I'm a creative director. I'm a member of the Climate Reality Project, Chicago Metro Chapter, and I'm also on the Task Force for Electrification of Public Transit. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I also want to say I've just always taken such great pride in how clean our city is. I grew up in Highland Park. I went to be a first in Illinois. I got my master's at our institute. I am such a Chicago girl and I have always enjoyed taking our buses and our trains. I used to take them when I was little with my parents and then later on in grad school. And I just want to thank you guys again for keeping them up and running. Not an easy feat, especially through a pandemic. So bravo. I don't know how you guys do it, but I am very grateful. But I'd also like to bring you back to 2017. I took this very specific moment in my life when I stood on my balcony in my West Loop apartment, breastfeeding my days-old infant. And below me, there were all these city buses that were just grossly idling and constantly polluting the fresh air that we all depend on to breathe. And I thought twice about bringing my infant outside. I was like, what am I exposing him to here? And I thought twice about how I was spending my time. And at that time, I thought, you know, if I could, if I could just speak to the people in charge and help them understand the great responsibility that they have and the greatness they can do by changing from battery electric buses to battery electric buses instead of fossil fuel buses, we would all be in a better place as society. Fossil fuel buses create pollution that actually makes us dumber and in concentrated amounts causes cancers and death. And unfortunately, the difference between the pollution that a diesel bus creates and a CNG bus is not actually that great. But if you could, and I have numbers here, but I'm not going to bore you with numbers because I know you guys can look up numbers. But if you could focus on battery electric buses that have zero of these polluting gases, we would all be in a better place. I am delaying dinner time to tell you with my now four-year-old son, to please think twice. We have some toddler math for you, Colter. Is this Colter? Do you want to say hi?
Hi.
Colter's here to help do some toddler math. This is an example of the bus, right, of a CNG bus that is currently line item in the budgets moving forward. And how many cars do you think the pollution makes of this bus? Do you remember what we talked about? It's, they're rough numbers here, but let's see. I know it's, was it 10? No, was it more than that? Do you want to? No, was it more than that? Do you want to pour out some more? It was 30? What does 30 cars look like? What does 30 cars look like? Can you show us? Can you help the people understand how much pollution these buses cause that we don't have to keep buying? They're scattering. Okay, we've got a few more. Hold on. Okay, it must be 30. It might be 30, it might be 40. But I think if you, you guys get the idea here. You have the power to take all these polluting cars or the pollution from this away. So what do we, what do we want to tell them? Please don't buy any more fossil fuel buses. And he's getting shy. Do you want to try one more time? No, okay, well, we got, we got our toddler math in. Thank you so much again for your time and please, please think of us. Thank you so much.
We appreciate the comments. Thank you. The next name that I have on the list is Bruce Mainzer. Are you present, Bruce? You can unmute yourself and you're welcome to make your comments.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. I'll turn on my camera as well. Thank you for this opportunity to submit comments. My name is Bruce Mainzer, and I live in Highland Park, and I am a former transit official, having worked for RTA of Illinois many years ago, Metro North Commuter Railroad in New York as a transportation planner, and also a manager of capital grants in the IDOT Public Transportation Section. I am now retired, and I am a member of the Chicago Chapter of the Climate Reality Project. Over the past few months, members of the Climate Reality, Sierra Club, and other concerned individuals have submitted comments to both CTA and PACE boards to urge them to transition to electric buses as a high priority. As many of you know, we are at an inflection point with respect to warming of the planet, and RTA needs to meet this challenge of addressing the very real impacts of climate change. We are appreciative of PACE's responsiveness to our comments. In their current FY22 capital plan, which they submitted to RTA, they have now committed to end all diesel bus purchases and to begin a six-bus electric bus demo project for their Waukegan service and to order a total of 52 electric buses in the five-year plan for the Waukegan Garage. So PACE has also now committed to a zero emission fleet by 2040. We applaud PACE's decision to end diesel bus purchases, but PACE is still programming 88 new fossil fuel compressed natural gas buses in the FY22 capital plan and is going forward with a bid to manufacture 40 CNG buses this year. CNG buses emit as much or more greenhouse gases as diesel buses when accounting for the production, transmission, and tailpipe emissions of CNG. Any bus programmed in the capital budget now by RTA will be operating well into the decade of the 2030s and contributing to global warming. We are also appreciative of CTA's initial testing of electric buses. Two CTA electric buses have been operating since 2014. Another nine buses were received in 2021, and CTA is awaiting 14 more electric buses in 2022. CTA also has a commitment to an emission-free bus fleet by 2040. However, with this FY22 five-year plan, we were shocked to see that CTA is only planning to procure 70 more electric buses while continuing to replace the majority of its fleet with diesel buses. The 600 new diesel buses in the FY22 capital plan will continue to spew dangerous nitrogen oxide, particulate matter, and greenhouse gases well into the 2030s decade. CTA's 2040 commitment to an emission-free fleet does not seem achievable, given this plan. RTA Board members have the responsibility to ensure that the service boards make progress to achieve an electrification of the region's bus fleet as soon as possible. We expect that there will be some resistance from the region's operators to new technologies, but the verdict is in on electric buses. They are feasible, cost-effective, and reliable now. The Boston Area Transit Agency, MBTA, just this fall concluded that issues of electric bus reliability and cold weather are easily overcome by having larger batteries on a subset of buses on longer-range routes, on-road charging stations in other cases, and to supplement buses with auxiliary heaters to warm the passenger cabin as our own CTA bus demo demonstrated. The CTA led the nation in that solution that other operators are now using. The MBTA study has concluded that with every year, the technology for batteries is improving so much that the impact of cold weather on range will not be a problem for future electric bus models. Although the capital bus, capital cost of an electric bus is typically 200 to 300,000 more than a diesel or CNG buses, there is no real issue with availability of funds to aggressively transition to an all-electric fleet now. For example, the Illinois EPA Fund has allocated 39.9 million to Illinois transit operators to fund the purchase of electric buses. This is from the VW settlement funds. So far, not one Illinois State Transit Agency has made use of these funds. I had a discussion with Director John Kim of the Illinois EPA, and I suggested that instead of purchasing an entire electric bus, the Illinois EPA could just fund the capital acquisition of the bus batteries, thereby making the capital acquisition cost of the electric bus the same as a fossil fuel powered bus when using federal and state transit funds. This could add 156 more electric buses this year in the RTA capital plan if you make use of that money. Obviously, the recently passed federal infrastructure bill will also allow more funds to replace existing diesel buses with electric buses. Finally, since electric buses save on average 400,000 in fuel and maintenance costs over the 12-year life of a bus, the batteries can be leased and paid for out of these operating cost savings. Several electric bus manufacturers offer these incentives to keep the cost of an electric bus the same as a fossil fuel power bus, and the leasing cost easily fits within the operating cost of the of a transit operator. So there really is no barrier anymore to aggressively transitioning to electric bus fleets. RTA has an obligation to help fulfill the vision of Governor Pritzker to make Illinois a leader in electric vehicle technology and manufacturing. Last month, upon signing the Reimagining Electrical Vehicles Act, Governor Pritzker stated today's bill signing represents the next step in promoting Illinois as the Silicon Valley of EVs as we work together to attract new investment from suppliers and other supporting players in this industry. RTA Board members should realize that in this capital plan, 82% of all the buses programmed over the next five years for CTA and PACE combined are still planned to be fossil fuel buses. RTA expending Illinois state bond monies and federal transit funding in this manner does not at all support the goal of Illinois becoming the Silicon Valley of EVs. This year, we are seeing the tragic consequences of climate change. It's time for RTA to join other responsible transit agencies and get on the electric bus. It's now time for RTA to deny approval for any more fossil fuel buses in the capital plan for CTA and PACE. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next name I have is Tracy McFadden. Tracy, are you present? Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm here.
All right.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you just fine. Thank you. Go ahead and make your comment.
Okay, thank you. Yes, my name is Tracy McFadden. I wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak this evening and also a big shout out to the RTA altogether because I realized that's a really hard job you guys are doing. I mean, it's a massive operation, you know, from trains to buses to everything. It's just amazing to me, the buses and and what you do. So thank you. I want to say that. I live in Kane County. I'm an Air Force officer veteran. I'm a retired airline captain and a father and a grandfather. And I'm here today just to strongly urge that the RTA focus their budget efforts on purchasing electric buses to replace any aging buses in their fleet. Most importantly, I, along with so many other citizens in the Chicagoland area, want to ensure that no taxpayer funds are used to purchase on what is now considered outdated diesel or outdated CNG buses. I'd like to speak just a moment for the subject of clean diesel buses. And the term clean diesel is essentially an oxymoron. It's not possible to have a totally clean diesel engine. It's always going to be spewing out pollutants and poisonous gases. The clean diesel technology, which was first introduced many, many years ago, is not new, and it has improved, I will admit, over the years. The concept of clean diesel has essentially three components. Low sulfur diesel fuel, new engine design, and emissions control. And while this clean diesel fuel concept does reduce the amount of sulfur found in the fuel, it does not completely eliminate it or other noxious gases that are spewed from a diesel bus. So we never reached that zero. And while there have been these improvements over the years, there's never going to be a clean diesel bus, as I mentioned. And the reason is we're burning fossil fuels. So it's technically impossible. So to buy more fossil fuel burning buses is an incremental improvement. And when what we need is a transformation, we have two huge problems. Diesel buses are making people sick as they spew out the noxious gases. And second, we are in what the United Nations calls a climate emergency. So really don't have the time to wait 12 years, you know, the rough life cycle of the diesel bus for it to run out. So it also needs to be considered is, as I said, these are fossil fuel buses. But so in order for them to run at all, we need to still pump the oil out of the ground, refine the fuel, transport it to our location, and store it. Now, all of these things are increasing the carbon footprint of the diesel bus. So it's kind of a sleight of hand. If someone goes like this and says, look, we've improved the amount of bad things coming out of a bus. Look, isn't this great? Well, of course, we're going to say, yeah, I like that. But what you're not seeing is the other side, if I was shown that, because the other side is all these other things that it took to get that fossil fuel to that bus. And if we don't consider that, we don't have the whole picture of what's going on or the carbon footprint. So the environmental damage incurred from this, what's known as well-to-wheel, is tremendous and must be accounted for. And as we know, an electric bus does not spew out any poisonous gases at all. In addition, as has been pointed out, the total cost of ownership of an electric bus is lower due to its lower lifetime maintenance cost. This is about our, it's not only about our health, but it's also about fiscal responsibility. And I guess I'm just asking to please spend our money wisely and and don't waste it on outdated technology. By choosing electric buses, we can, as was pointed out, that Governor Pritzker said we can become a leader in the electric transportation revolution. So I ask finally that you please say no to the purchase of diesel and compressed natural gas buses. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment. The next name I have on my list is Pam Tate. Pam, are you present?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead and make your comment.
Okay, good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Pam Tate. I'm a resident of Oak Park, and I'm also a member of the Climate Reality Project and chair that task force that was mentioned on public transit and electrification of public transit. Last spring, I had a chance to make a presentation to the RTA Board and to the staff on another occasion about the urgency of the climate crisis. And I really went into detail about the more intense hurricanes, more intense rainfall and flooding, more intense fires, more human lives lost, more property damage, more infrastructure damage, more wildlife going extinct, longer-lasting droughts, rise of sea levels, more viruses and tropical insect diseases, and heat waves like we have never seen before. I I'm sure you were as alarmed to hear those things as I am, and I'm still very alarmed. And I'm sure that you also know that we are running out of time to slow down global warming. We are running out of time if we don't want to experience even more destruction. I also noted then that that transportation is the top source of greenhouse gases in this country. And you know that medium and heavy-duty vehicles like buses and trains are huge contributors, as Kristin showed you with the bus and the cars. And yet, in the face of this, CTA is planning to purchase hundreds of diesel buses in its current budget and just 70 electric buses, as as others have said. Fossil fuel-powered buses are huge polluters, and they are making our world warmer. Clearly, these agency budgets from PACE and CTA, PACE is going to planning to purchase 88 compressed natural gas buses. These agency buses just do not reflect the solid commitment to zero emissions. And they don't reflect an acknowledgement of the urgency that I laid out for the RTA Board last spring. If you approve purchasing these buses, they'll be on our roads for 12 years or more. Are you really comfortable with that? Are you really comfortable approving that? I wouldn't be if I were an RTA Board member. The urgency of the climate crisis is the reason that we keep attending these meetings and the reason we keep trying to convince you that decarbonizing PACE and CTA must be done much more quickly than these agencies have planned. I realize that they've made commitments to zero emissions way off in 2040. But meanwhile, they're putting forward their rationale for continuing to purchase what they've been purchasing with electric playing a tiny part. You, the board, have overall oversight. You can urge them to change those budgets and plans. There is time to do that. If you really take the climate crisis seriously, if you realize and agree that every policy decision you make either damages or helps to address the climate crisis, then purchasing decisions should follow. They should follow. They should be in line with with what you realize. I'm asking you to exercise your leadership role and your oversight role and tell the agencies to change these plans. Now, we've all heard at the various board meetings we've been attending objections from the agencies. One is the upfront cost that you've heard about. One is the cold winters, which you've also heard about. Another is the time it takes to plan for the changes and the fact that the manufacturers can't produce enough electric buses fast enough anyway. And I even heard that the technology is too new to know if it's reliable. Several people have spoken to various pieces of this, but I want to come back to the cost issue again. It's the responsible decision to go electric. Study after study demonstrates that electric buses are a cheaper long-term investment. They are more upfront, but they cost less long-term. You already heard from Mr. Mainzer that $400,000 would be saved in fuel and maintenance per bus over a 12-year period. And you've heard about battery leasing and how that could make a difference as well. And there are huge incentives in both the state's CEGO law and the new federal infrastructure law. Illinois is eligible for $5 billion in transit grants for $2.5 billion in competitive EV charging grants and another $10 billion in grants for low-emission transit and school buses. There, there are huge dollars out there. These funds could help us move to electric more quickly. The second issue about cold weather, you've already heard about. But we would be willing to to share with you the studies and the reports that we have read about. But we would be willing to stu- to share with you the studies and the reports that we have read about. If that would help be helpful to you from Boston, from Norway, from a whole variety of cold climates like ours. Then statements have been made that the agencies need more time to plan the transitions. And that even if they ordered the buses now, the manufacturers wouldn't be able to supply them. Well, of course, we recognize you can't instantly go electric. You can't have an all-electric vehicle fleet in place tomorrow. And the manufacturers would have to ramp up, but if the agencies increase their orders now. The manufacturers would ramp up knowing that they have orders to fill. It's a demand-supply issue. If 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 markets operate the way they usually do. When demand goes up, then manufacturers gear up and meet the supply. It just takes leadership, planning and resources. And this is the time, given the new state and federal money that is on the table, which we could get a major share of. And last, various people have said, well, this technology is in its infancy. It's too new. This is just not accurate. It is not accurate. The the technology is far from infancy. In fact, it's rapidly expanding. The cost is coming down. And market saturation is expected to reach forty percent in less than five years. Projections are now that half the world's buses will be electric in three years. Why not us? Why are we not on that moving train? I'm urging you. I'm imploring you to ask the agencies to change course. Move much more rapidly to electric. Establish targets each year until they are fully electric. Do it earlier than twenty forty, perhaps twenty thirty or twenty thirty-five at the latest. Help them apply for federal and state funds. We would be willing to help as well. So that our leader, our our Chicago region can be a leader in zero emissions. Please take action now to say no to these purchases. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next name I have is Tom Coleman. Tom Coleman, are you present? If so, you can unmute yourself.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me all right?
I can hear you just fine. Please go ahead and make your comment.
Okay, my name is Tom Coleman and I'm a resident of Naperville. I'm also a member of Climate Reality Project. I lead the uh electric vehicle task force. Uh thanks for the opportunity to speak in this hearing today. I'm sure you're all concerned about reports as others have said about increasing rainfall, flooding, tornadoes, hurricanes. Droughts and fires. Well, you know, the heat, the heat waves and the in the um. You know, oceans rising and so forth. Well, you know, ninety-seven percent of climate scientists says this is real. It's going to get worse if we don't make change. So these same sources of emissions are also, as other people have said, create poisonous pollution, which is separate from greenhouse gases. The World Health Organization is in the land center basically saying that this pollution sickens and kills people. Between seven and nine million people uh per year on a worldwide basis, so it's really huge. And the answer calls pollution a healthcare emergency. And even in the USA in twenty twenty-one, the American Lung Association. Uh made it clear in the in a recent report that four in ten people, one hundred and thirty-five million people. Live in areas of the country that do not meet the EPA's own health uh air air quality standards. So that's, you know, forty percent of the population. So unfortunately, the EPA says that twenty-nine percent of greenhouse gas emissions come from transportation. So if we focus now on transportation, it comes mostly from autos and buses and and light trucks and so forth. You know, this makes transportation the greatest uh single emitter emitter in the USA. And finally, while the USA trails China in terms of total emissions, we're number two. The USA has contributed almost twice the emissions that China has committed over the over the last uh. You know, twenty thirty, forty, fifty years. So really, there's an obligation that we have based on what we have done in the past, not just what we're doing today. So, you know, the question is, do we need to change? And as others have said, yes, we do, and it's really no time to delay. But the question is, can we change? And the answer is yes, but the real issue is whether we'll have the will to change, the will to. You know, uh break from the past and say, you know, what do we do now? So uh yeah, the RTA uh pace bus and and CTA have started to make change, and this is encouraging. So we need to take this action, continue this action. Uh we're glad to see the CTA, I guess it's something like seventy electric buses. We applaud the pace. A pace bus for their actions to include electric buses uh you know, in a test mode. And the but the trouble is, uh as others have said, the CTA is is going to purchase diesel buses that'll be around for a dozen years. A dozen years of polluting and hurting our children. So we have to think about that. We have to consider also that pace, although they've turned away from diesel buses, which is interesting. That's a good move, but they're planning to explain, expand their fleet of compressed natural gas vehicles, basically. Uh gas, natural gas is mostly methane and methane is between twenty and eighty times more powerful than carbon dioxide. Depending on the timeframe selected. So this is pretty serious. So CNG isn't the answer. Uh because it isn't just that uh pollution from the bus itself, it's the upstream emissions that occur. So we look at well-to-wheel emissions, C CNG is not the answer. We ask you to please reconsider that. And also Bloomberg reports uh indicates that we are going to grow from eighty-one thousand buses on the road. To seven hundred and four thousand by twenty twenty-seven. And I think it was Pam that mentioned something about large percentages of uh buses will be electric buses. Well, we can take heed from what China is doing. They have over four hundred and twenty thousand. Uh electric buses on the road and they're adding thousands, something like eight thousand buses a week to their uh fleets. But importantly, too, is the range of these buses are now hitting two hundred and seventeen miles. And in a leading bus manufacturer, Proterra, now has buses they're producing that are getting three hundred and twenty-five, twenty-nine miles of range. Which is particularly important in areas such as uh Chicago. Where we have a cold and of course, cold does affect range because of the need for heating. Because they're efficient and they don't waste energy. So how does it work in cold climates? Well, we should turn to Scandinavian and Nordic countries as to what they do. They're they're deploying, they're deploying electric buses left and right, and they're getting good results. But best practices on what to do in cold climates have to be adhered to. And that's true of autos and that's true of uh buses as well. So we know that the auto in uh, you know, the auto industry and the bus industry. That EVs are the type of vehicles to address the dual problem of emissions. From both uh both both poisonous pollution and greenhouse gas emissions. So with that said, we urge the RTA, CTA and bus. To look at best practice at organizations, best practice countries like Norway, seventy percent of all. Vehicles being put on the road are plugged in electric vehicles. So let's take a lead from these cold countries. Let's take a lead and take the lead over that we started to make years ago. And create a new lead from Chicagoland about best practices and what our country can do. It's for ourselves today and it's for the future of our of our children. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker I have is Cynthia Linton. Cynthia Linton, are you present? You can unmute yourself.
I am, uh.
Go ahead and make a comment.
Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. Um. My name is Cynthia Linton. I live in Chicago in the Streeterville neighborhood. And one of the advantages of living where I do is I can walk or take the bus just about anywhere I want to go. And I like to get out and remove my mask and walk just uh for exercise and for fresh air. But I'm concerned about the poor air quality in Chicago. And I often wonder if I'd be better off to leave my mask on, and that's a little frightening. As I move around the city on foot, I'm aware of the pollution coming from cars, trucks. And especially buses. And I long for the day when they'll all be electric and our air will be clean and healthy. Chicago and Cook County now have a failing grade from the American Lung Association. On ground level ozone pollution, which adversely affects public health. A study from the University of Chicago and Respiratory Health Association. Showed that the level of asthma is twelve percent higher near bus garages. And this, than the city average is. And COPD levels are higher by twenty-three point six percent. The city has pledged to have only electric buses on the street by twenty forty. Which is coming faster than we may think. But now the CTA is planning to buy hundreds of diesel buses over the next five years. Why? They just contribute more poisonous pollution for us to inhale. And more greenhouse gas emissions to warm the planet and disrupt our climate. I fear that I will never see that clean air of the future that I envisioned. I'm reminded of a story about the heavy drinker who went to see the doctor. And the doctor said his liver was in terrible shape and he needed to stop drinking. Before he did more damage. And the man said, I'll stop drinking in twenty forty. That's too late, the doctor said. You're too, you'll be too sick by then. You may not even be alive. But the man said, it's just too hard to make a big lifestyle change right away. I pledged to quit. Isn't that enough? It's really the same with mass transit. We can't wait till twenty forty and and do everything at once. We need to speed up the purchase of electric buses in both the city and suburbs. To start improving air quality and public health. You can save lives by doing that. They asked the RTA to help pace and CTA transition more quickly to electric buses. And please don't approve more fossil fuel buses. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. If you're just joining us, we are going through speakers who gave us notice beforehand that they wanted to speak. As soon as we're done with that, we'll start to go through speakers who um did not give uh notice. And if you'd like to speak, please go ahead and enter your name into the chat box. Um and if you're on the phone and you can't do that, uh don't worry, we will, we will get to everyone who would like to make a comment. Uh the next person who I have uh as uh wishing to speak is John Cavallunas. Uh are you present?
I am.
Great, we can hear you just fine. Go ahead and make your comment.
All right, thank you, Tina. Yeah, I'm John Cavallunas from Lakewood, Illinois in McHenry County. I'm a former chair of the Sustainability Committee of the City of Crystal Lake. And currently, I'm an active member of the Climate Reality Project Chicago Metro Chapter. Uh I heard the comment earlier how clean the uh facilities are, the buses and trains. And as a decades-long user, I can attest to that. I've been a heavy user of Metra and partial user of CTA recently, and uh they are clean. Now, that's very much appreciated. Uh I've not been a lifelong environmentalist, but over the last thirty years have come to realize. There's not for others to worry about our climate, water cleanliness, pollution and endangered species. But it's up for me and for all those in power uh to make a difference. Uh you, the RTA board, are among those in the latter group. Uh with power to make a meaningful difference, to reduce pollution and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Specifically, I see this as making significant reductions slash eliminations. In twenty twenty-two purchases of diesel buses for the CTA and seat C and G buses for pace. The governor went to Glasgow, Scotland, not only to seek decarbonization for the state of Illinois. But to make us the EV capital of the United States. On November sixteenth, Governor Pritzker signed the Reimagining Electric Vehicles Act. Which will support the development of zero emission vehicles. And do so by bringing the manufacturing right here to Illinois. The Metro, Pace and CTA budgets need to align strongly with that commitment right now. Not with the future goal of twenty thirty-five or twenty forty. Battery electric bus and train demand in your budgets will help drive the EV manufacturers to expand in Illinois. And align your budgets with the goals of CJA and the Reimagining EV Act. I've also made notes here about fossil fuel being uh polluting as well as C and G from welder wheels. It's been mentioned by others. I just reinforced that, that C and G is fossil fuel and it is. A greenhouse gas emitter. And with the welder wheels, pipeline has a lot of pollution emitted at that point. Financially, I've also had seen the same thing. This is a good financial decision. Operating savings would cover any differential on the capital purchase. And as Bruce had mentioned, battery leasing programs are an option. So in closing, I'm glad to see that Pace and the CTA have included electric buses in their plans. By ask the RTA board to move further than that and request the purchase of no more fossil fuel bus buses right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next uh pre-registered speaker who notified us before the meeting that they would like to speak is Charles Paydop. Uh, Mr. Paydop, are you here?
Yes.
All right, go ahead and make your comment. We can hear you.
Yes, I just have a few eclectic brief remarks. I'm a secretary of citizens taking action for transit-dependent riders. Um looking over the budget, I was, we were somewhat surprised to see that. The operating budget actually is scheduled to increase. Uh to three point four billion, which is a five percent increase considering. The system is. And some, you said yourself, language is disrupted right now. Um granted, there are three point four billion in federal relief funding to assist in operating the systems, the three acts. And however, ridership from our estimation went down to eighty percent, went down eighty percent. Uh right now, I think it's about forty percent. And it may get up to fifty-nine percent. So we're still in a status of distress. Granted, I read the three-step COVID recovery strategy. Uh in the, which was linked in the budget, uh which I think is merit. And should be implemented. Looking at the three services. Uh CTA should be commended for having maintained service at levels as usual. Um they, ridership went down even to twenty-eight percent. Uh but they maintain, this is the important figure, the total vehicle revenue miles remained intact. That's what we like to see. B buses on the street that people can use. Uh regarding Metro, Metro, of course, experienced some severe cut down to nineteen percent ridership. On page twenty-three. Um their passenger trip, trips, I don't know if they've recovered. Uh we were thinking possibly this may be confronted, Metro may be confronted with a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Type of ridership. Now, I don't know about that, but that was been discussed. Now regarding pace, uh pace went down to twenty-five percent. And apparently they're back to forty-three percent in ridership figures. However. It distresses us to no end that they eliminated one hundred, one hundred routes. Were were suspended or significantly reduced. Our organization is vehemently opposed to any sort of service adjustments. These are never restored. If you look at the pace budget. There's very little, they may tell you restoring seven or eight routes. There's nothing allocated if you look into the budget. People need, whether it's an electric bus or a hybrid bus. Pace has made a decision to run no buses. Now, this causes irreparable harm to rider, the people, the transit-dependent riders. Who depend on this mode of transportation to conduct their lives and private affairs. And I think this should be addressed uh specifically what exactly. Our figures, our figures even indicate that they had a surplus of funding, which was the amazing thing. I tried to verify that with the agency and we didn't have any success. But they actually had a surplus of funding and for some, you know, unknown reason, decided to eliminate. decided to eliminate one, that's the number of revenue miles and bus stops that were eliminated. It's just incalculable. In our corporate memory of our organization, we've never seen anything like that. Now regarding the Regional Capital Program, page forty-five, it used to be that, in our, I recollect, RTA used to have about twenty capital projects, but now they have seventy-five. So that's very positive and we compliment you on your work in this regard. There is some decline in the number of projects as money gets spent. But we have to maintain our systems in a state of good repair. That's basically it. Thank you very much. I'm glad to see the president and the other board members present to hear our views and comments on a vital element of our corporate lives. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next commenter I have is Jean Pierce. Are you present?
Yes, I am. I'm speaking on behalf of the members of the League of Women Voters of Central Kane County. As advocates for the environment, the league is urging you to purchase more electric buses rather than investing in diesel and CNG. We appreciate that purchasing some electric buses is in the budget, but we're concerned about the money that will be spent on CNG and diesel buses. As you've heard, diesel buses pollute the air and cause significant negative health impacts for tens of thousands of riders and residents who live in communities along bus routes. Furthermore, transportation has become the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions of all US energy sectors. If you purchase diesel buses, these fossil-fueled powered buses will be on Illinois roads for the next twelve or more years. Leaving polluting vehicles on the road will be on the timeframe in which scientists say we must take action to avoid the worst impacts of climate change. Finally, electric buses are a fiscally responsible choice. As was mentioned earlier, each bus would save approximately four hundred thousand dollars in fuel and maintenance costs over twelve years. Please plan on purchasing more electric buses, not diesel or CNG.
Thank you for your comment. The next name I have is Ray Ostrowski. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Are you present?
I am, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Ray Ostrowski. I'm a resident of Glenview, Illinois, an environmental professional and a member of the Climate Reality Project Chicago Metro Chapter. I worked downtown for seventeen years and rode the CTA and Metro for all of those years. I also rode the L from downtown to IIT while studying for my master's degree in environmental engineering. I have great memories of the services and it getting me where I needed to go on time. These transit systems are a great resource for everyone in the Chicagoland area, and I thank you for all you do to keep these systems running. I would just like to add my voice and opinion to those of the prior speakers and advocate that RTA uses its financial oversight of its member agencies to move away from fossil fuel vehicles and locomotives. I congratulate RTA and Pace for Pace's recent commitment to zero emission fixed route fleet by twenty forty. However, all three agencies need to move faster. The future is carbon-free world in which fossil fuels have no place. In order to address the mounting impacts of climate crisis that others have talked about so well, as a collective community, we must move swiftly to an all-electric transportation systems along with other climate initiatives. I urge the board to think about the planet's future, think about the future generations, and move with all speed to fund those zero emission transit systems. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. The next commenter I have is Lona Steele. You may unmute yourself and make your comment.
My name is Lona Steele, and I live in Geneva, Illinois. We've moved here from other larger metropolitan areas that were not as fortunate or not as far seeing as, as the Chicago area has been. We have really benefited and appreciated from using the CTA. The Metro is our favorite thing. And, and we watch the Pace buses doing their routes on an hourly basis and are really impressed with the public transportation that's here. I am disturbed, though, about the commitment to continue with fossil fuel vehicles. I know that for some people, talking about twenty thirty-five, twenty forty seems really close. For me, that's a long time from now, and that is probably more years than I will be around to see. So I'm not trying to be morbid here, but I think we can't be projecting twenty years, thirty years down the line. I know that there are some concerns. We live in a colder climate. I know that. But we travel to Europe frequently, and most of the major cities in Europe have had electric buses for several years of this last decade. And they seem to operate just really fine in the cold weather. I know that there's a concern about the cost. And I know that batteries are very expensive and electric vehicles. But I know that there's a leasing program that might make that cost for operating electric vehicles be very competitive with the cost of operating diesel-powered or other fossil-fuel-powered vehicles. I, let's see, what else was I going to say here? I, I just would like to encourage the RTA to consider seriously purchasing electric vehicles, getting, getting on the road, no pun intended, with that program sooner rather than later. And for me, twenty forty is, is much, much later. So I thank, I thank the RTA for the wonderful conditions of the public transportation that we've used. But let's move to electric for us and for further generations. Thank you so much for allowing me to comment.
Thank you. Is there any, I don't have any other names from the chat or who contacted me before, contacted us before the meeting of those who would like to speak. But if there's anybody who would like to speak, go ahead and put your name in the chat. Or if you can't, just go ahead and unmute yourself and say your name. Okay, the meeting will remain open, and the RTA staff will remain here until seven o'clock. We'll continue to admit people, and if they would like to speak, allow them to speak. I know I speak on behalf of our staff and our board members when I say thank you all for coming and for your comments and for your engagement with the budget.
If anyone is just joining and would like to make a comment, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and make a comment now. If not, we'll stay here until 7 o'clock and if anyone joins, they can make a comment when they join. I see someone just joined us by call in number. If you would like to make a comment, you can unmute your phone and go ahead and do so.
I've got my hand up. It doesn't seem to be interrupting anyone though, does it?
No, you can go ahead and make a comment. We just asked that you keep your comments to 10 minutes or less. Thank you.
Yeah, my comment will be very short. My name is Bill Cale. I live in Geneva, Illinois. And I was just calling to express my shock and dismay to hear that the RTA was not taking this opportunity to move as aggressively as possible for electric buses and instead is going the wrong way for history and the wrong way for humanity. Very disappointing. So hopefully that some of the other presentations that came along tonight would help encourage you to consider to be a little bit more open minded and aggressive and pursuing a just and livable future for our children and our grandchildren. I think that's about it. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thanks for your comment. I see we have a phone caller just joining us. If you'd like to speak, go ahead and make your comment.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you. Go ahead and make a comment.
Oh, hi. Okay, Jacob Aronoff is my name. I've been kind of in and out of the hearing. Yeah, thank you for this hearing. I live Gladstone Park area on the northwest side of Chicago. And I am also a member of Citizens Taking Action. I know there was a comment before from my friend Charles Pata. I'm in agreement with him. Why is it that you have CTA and Metro not making any, not making any cuts even though their service is down because of the pandemic? And yet PACE is getting a tremendous amount of money from the federal stimulus package to tide them over for the pandemic and yet they go ahead and make 100 service cuts. This is not acceptable. I'm adamantly opposed to any service cuts unless there's a real reason for it. I don't understand the reason for it. How can you justify making 100, how can PACE justify making 100 service reductions at a time when they're getting federal funding to help, federal funding for pandemic relief? I'm going to ask that you not accept PACE's, PACE's budget for this year and instead ask the state's inspector general to do a thorough audit of PACE's budget. Because I'd like to know where all this money is, if they're making that many cuts, where all this money is going to.
Thanks for your comment.
So, yeah. It's just, it's unacceptable to receive several million dollars in, in federal aid and then make that many service cuts. I missed the PACE budget, so I don't know the specifics of the budget. I haven't actually seen it. I know they're making tremendous number of service cuts this year. Hello?
Hi, we, we are remaining available until 7 o'clock if anyone else would like to make a comment. But until then, we'll just stay and await other people. If your comment's done, you can stay or you're welcome to leave as well.
Okay, but you're, you're still accepting comments and writing until December 15th, is that right?
That's correct. You can email any comments to communications@rtachicago.org.
Okay, I also, I'd like to receive a copy of the RTA budget. I haven't seen it yet.
You can find it on our website and.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't, I don't have access to the web due to eye problems. You don't have, you don't have any printed, printed copies of it?
Can you email us with your information?
Oh, I'll give it to you now.
This is a public meeting, so you'd be giving your address information.
Well, let me, I could, I could, I could call, I could call it into the office tomorrow. Who, who do I talk to at the office?
Let me give you our general number. Just one moment.
Okay, all right.
You can call 312.
Yeah.
913.
Yeah.
3200.
Yeah, who do I ask for?
You can just give them your information. You don't need to ask for anyone.
What's, what's the, what's the direct number for the secretary's office?
Just one second.
Yeah.
Okay, you can go ahead and call this number 312-913-323.
913?
Correct.
32 what?
3231.
3231, okay, and who is that?
That's the secretary's office.
Who is the secretary?
You can, you can ask for Jeremy Lamarche.
Say again?
Jeremy Lamarche, L A M A R C.
Okay, 91312913, what is it?
3231.
3231, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, bye bye.
Thank you for joining us.
We are almost at 7 o'clock and I just want to do one last check to see if anyone has joined who wants to make comment before we end the meeting. Chairman Dillard, it is 7 o'clock.
Okay, thank you Tina very much and to the staff, thank you, to the directors. Thank you for your attention and most importantly to the public for your comments. I love the Tyler math. We've never had a TV star testify before us either, so it's a historic evening. And your messages to us are well taken and we deeply appreciate it. So it's 7 o'clock PM, which is the stated time to end this hearing. If there are no further comments or questions, I will call this hearing to a close. And again, thank you everybody for your participation and interest. Please continue to check the RTA website for informations and updates and we always solicit your valuable input. Thank you very much to everybody. Everybody have a great holiday season and good night. We are adjourned.